All right, good evening everyone and welcome back from summer break. I call this meeting the City Council Redevelopment Agency of August 22, 2011 to order. Sorry we're running a little late in closed session. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Troop 321. Gentlemen, please stand.
Color guard, front and center. Color guard, please prepare to present the colors. Absolut, color guard, that's. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the mayor of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard, post the colors. Color guard dismissed.
Okay, we will start with changes to the order agenda. Mr. Malby?
No changes this evening.
Any report from closed session?
We had a closed session in the special meeting immediately before this meeting and there are no reportable actions from that meeting.
Okay, we're going to go with Council of Communications, Mr. Grokot. Okay, none from Mr. Grokot. Mr. Royce?
Yes, just a couple items. As summer draws towards an end, our summer concerts is also just drew towards an end. On this last Friday, we had seven concerts at Burton Park every Friday night from the middle of summer on. They were great. We wish the weather was a little warmer, but hopefully the public enjoyed all the cheer and the music and the socializing that goes on. Also bring up that, of course, let me just back up there, sorry. Summer concerts has been now the 21st year we've just finished. It's sponsored by, of course, Park and Rec gets heavily involved with it. We also, in this past two years, have engaged with one of our volunteer groups called San Carlos Together. Tom Davids is the chairperson of that organization. And one of the things you don't realize when you put a concert on is how much garbage there is after a concert, how many empty Coke cans and wine bottles there are, and all that needs to get picked up. And they just, you know, get through and organize just a lot of all of the background that goes on to put those concerts on. So really wanted to thank them and the Park and Rec. And then lastly, we actually have kind of one other concert. It's not being put on by this organization, but the foundation, Park and Rec Foundation, which we reviewed some preliminary plans to make some capital improvements to Burton Park, including like a stage, the basketball courts, bocce ball, and various things around the park. And so the first fundraiser for this event is coming up this coming Friday. It's somewhat like a concert series. There's two differences. One is you're going to pay. Secondly, it's an orchestra. And actually, it's St. Peter's Chamber Orchestra. I believe there's about 32 people in their group. And so it's going to be a little higher class. They're going to be serving food. And again, there's a price tag that comes along with it. I encourage you to go on the website for the city and check into it. It's a great way to support another function. And we'll continue, again, this is another way to utilize our parks and get everybody in town, you know, together. So those are, again, thanks to those concerts and looking forward to the last event of the year coming up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Royce, Mr. Gasilli.
That's me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have a handful. Mr. Royce talked about one of our Park and Rec Foundation events, which is the Sunset Symphony, which is 6:15 this Friday. You can go to the website, you don't even have to go to our website, they have a website at all, at www dot P R F San Carlos dot org. They also are having their second annual golf tournament on September 9. It's a shotgun start and it starts at 1:00 PM. You can get, put together foursome and you can reserve your spot on that website as well. And also this Saturday, August 27, at 8:00 PM, there's going to be San Carlos Community Movie Night in Burton Park. And I'm looking at Mr. Long to make sure I get all this right. We'll be showing Toy Story 3. This is put on by the San Carlos Parks and Rec Department, the Youth Advisory Council, and the Sheriff's Activities League. And there will be free popcorn and lemonade for as long as it lasts. So that is August 27, 8:00 PM. Bring your chairs and your blankets. Toy Story 3 will be shown. And with that, we have a handful of proclamations. One's not on the agenda, which I'll start with, and then we have some presentations for some Eagle Scouts, so I will be coming on down. Okay, so our first proclamation, if I'd like to call up, Ms. Mary Jo Hoffman. So for all of you who don't know Mary Jo, you obviously don't watch enough City Council meetings. She has been a longtime volunteer of this community and she's currently the Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission. And Ms. Hoffman is retiring from San Carlos service. She will be moving to beautiful Temecula and living on a very, very nice piece of land. So I'm going to read a little bit of the proclamation and then talk a little bit about Mary Jo. So it says, "Commanding Mary Jo Hoffman for her volunteer service to the city of San Carlos. Mary Jo volunteered and served as Vice Chair on the General Plan Advisory Committee from 2007 to 2009 and thoroughly advised the City Council on certain aspects of the future of San Carlos. Additionally, Mary Jo has served on the Arts and Culture Commission for the past seven years and this year as Chair and brought forth to fruition a public arts master plan recently adopted by the council. The work and dedication of Mary Jo Hoffman on both commissions has been extraordinary and is deserving of this mayoral recognition. Therefore, be proclaimed by myself Mayor of the city of San Carlos that Mary Jo is hereby commended and thanked for her time, dedication, energy, and great spirit of volunteerism on the Arts and Culture Commission and General Plan Advisory Committee and we wish you well in the future." So I had the pleasure of serving with Mary Jo. She was my Vice Chair on the General Plan Advisory Committee. We served a long two years together and it was an absolutely great time. It was incredibly rewarding. She is one of the stewards of our community. She's an incredible volunteer. Besides all the things that I list on here, she has brought the commissions together. She hosted a quarterly meeting of the commission chairs at her home where they could talk about what was going on in the city and work together. And we are going to greatly miss you and we're sad you're leaving, but we wish you all the best in the future.
Thank you very much. I thought I got this.
If you want to say anything, this is your last chance.
Wow, well, first and foremost, I want to thank the council and the mayor for the great support, especially during the tough times as well as the good times. So I want to appreciate the support and the guidance. I want to thank you for supporting the master plan for public art. I look forward to the community's involvement in future public art opportunities for the city. And I encourage everyone to volunteer and help. This is a great city and this is a great opportunity to use your talents in very special ways. You may not get compensated monetarily, but you get compensated in a lot of other very wonderful ways. So I wish all of you best of luck.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Now let's get our Eagle Scouts up here. Okay, so we have two out of the five and I'm not going to guess your names. I'm going to read the proclamation and I want you to introduce yourself and then tell us about your Eagle Scout project. So our recognition says, "We're honoring these two gentlemen. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is a character building organization composed of young men who are seeking to prepare themselves as better leaders and citizens for tomorrow by developing those traits and strengths of character of all people. And whereas scouting plays a vital force in the lives of many hundreds of boys in the city of San Carlos who are guided by a great many adult volunteers who have given generously of their time and talents, and the special and unique honor of achieving the highest award in scouting has been earned by the two of you of Troop 321. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Andy Klein, Mayor of the city of San Carlos hereby congratulate you." So I'd like you to introduce yourself to the crowd and we'll let them applaud first. So if you'd like to introduce yourself and talk about your Eagle Scout project, I'm pretty impressed by the both of you. I only made it to Cub Scout, so.
All right, well, I'm John Luckenbach. I'm a junior at Carlmont High. And my Eagle Scout project was a landscaping project at my church, Church of the Epiphany, right across the street from Burton Park. We ripped up all the ivy that was there, put in 73 plants, two benches, a drip system, and just kind of, you know, renovated the area. Yeah, so that's my project.
Hi, I'm Matt Hargadon. I go to San Carlos Academy and I'm a senior. And for my project, I also do landscaping. And at San Carlos Church, on the hill that they have, I planted six oak trees. And after that, I installed irrigation system on the hill to help water the trees. And then with the extra funds I had, I was able to donate $400 to the church for use in their water bill.
And we have a follow-up speaker?
Hi, I'm representing my son, Brian Cooper, who as a San Carlos native went to Heather, went to Tierra Linda Middle School, and then the Menlo School. Today's his first day at Vanderbilt University. So he's out in Nashville, Tennessee, and I'm representing him. His Eagle project was at the San Carlos Eaton Hills 4-H Club. There was a hill covered with weeds and an erosion issue every time it rained. And he terraced that, building retaining walls, and they're going to be able to have terrace gardens there as a result.
Congratulations to you all and tell your son, "Go Commodores." And we have one last thing, which I'm going to do from back here because this is official for our city as well. We have Stan Moppin, who has been appointed the new Deputy Fire Chief of Redwood City here. And I'd like you to come up and introduce yourself to the council and everyone say welcome to our new Deputy Fire Chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for that welcome. This, the opportunity and the challenges of getting promoted to a Deputy Fire Chief in any fire department is a time that is a kind of high point in somebody's life. But the increased opportunities that are being presented by the, what we see before us with San Carlos and Redwood City joining forces, it just makes this job just that much more rewarding and I'm looking forward to being able to fulfill that. We've had a long time relationship with San Carlos and I know all of the employees from the current organization. And so I've been working closely with the San Carlos, the future San Carlos firefighters, and I think we're going to have a great relationship. So thank you very much for your welcome tonight.
Well, thank you very much, Chief Moppin, and we'll be talking to you a bit later in this meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, and if that, if we want to give everyone a minute who wants to leave, we're actually going to start the official business part of our council meeting here in a second. We'll give you guys a little bit of time to clear out. Okay, so we are going to move on to item number six, which is public comment. This is for persons wishing to address the city councils or matters not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes and we will get started with Glenn Gelenew. Hope I pronounced that correctly, sir.
Thank you. I have a few items that I'd like to give the council to reference afterward.
Yeah, you can give them to the city clerk.
My name is Glenn Gelenew. I reside in San Carlos and have done so for 36 years. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to address the council this evening. I've recently become aware that the city of San Carlos has membership in the International Council of Local Environmental Initiatives, also known as ICLE. ICLE arose from the United Nations-sponsored program titled Agenda 21. Agenda 21 in its broadest sense is an effort towards global governance. It is cloaked under popular buzzwords used today such as sustainable growth, sustainable development, good governance, social justice, equalities of people, sustainable environments, global warming, and other such phrases. These buzzwords are a distortion of our language. We all want clean air, water, and wish to protect our environment. But make no mistake, Agenda 21 has as its ultimate goal the elimination of property rights, redistribution of wealth, the erosion of our constitution, our Bill of Rights, and most importantly, our right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I'm aware that this statement would on its surface lead you to believe that I'm another wacko. I implore you not to dismiss me so lightly. The facts will prove me right should the council take the time to research the matter fully. Further, as are our elected representatives, I believe it is your responsibility to do so. I stand before you tonight to encourage you to do just that. Take the time to research this issue and I believe it will serve the best interests of our community. I further request that you give consideration to withdrawing San Carlos from its membership in ICLE and at a minimum place the matter on agenda for further consideration. I'm not exactly sure how the city of San Carlos came to become a member of ICLE in the first place, but I trust it was done with good intentions. It is however my belief that if the council will hold open hearings on the matter and hear arguments both pro and con from experts with regard to ICLE and Agenda 21, the council will come to the same conclusions that I have, that it is not in the interest of the city, its citizens, or our nation for the city to maintain its membership in ICLE. I have provided you with some basic information for the council to review, as well as a few links I thought would be helpful, as well as a PDF file link to the completed UN Agenda document of Agenda 21. I hereby request that the council put this matter on the agenda for further consideration. I thank you for the opportunity to address the council tonight and look forward to your action on this matter in the future.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up, we have Karen Kiefer of Redwood City.
Good evening, Mayor Klein and council members. I am a resident of Redwood City and shop here and brought an 88-year-old woman last month for her doctor's appointment. I parked diagonally down Laurel Street and there was an SUV, a big one, on my right-hand side getting out. According to the National Safe Driver's Propies, I put on my flashers in my small, compact Honda Hybrid, was moving out slowly, like two miles an hour, when a car hit me. They did not see me apparently, coming with the flashers on or backing out slowly. I had waited for other cars that I could see to pass, but I didn't see this one. And it was my fault apparently, according to all the laws, because the people in the right-of-way can pass. So my recommendation is not to have all of the diagonal parking, change to parallel parking, which would be safer for people to get out because they could see who's coming. But perhaps for you to consider having a block for SUVs and the big trucks and stuff, and then another block for regular cars, and then back and forth, SUV cars, et cetera. Or one side of the street be for SUVs and the other side for cars. Because I'm sure I'm probably not the only one who was in an accident because a Mercedes hit me. It cost several thousand dollars to the insurance company for that. And it cost, for my car, it was $700. But I'm sure I'm not the only person that has been hit that you don't know about. So I ask your consideration.
All right, thank you. We'll throw that on the staff. Thank you very much. Okay, Bob Black.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I've sung this song before and I'll probably sing it again. It has to do with the industrial road lighting. And I understand that we have a project to, an improved project, to replace the existing street lighting with LED streetlights. Streetlights should set the architectural style and standard for the future of our industrial district. They are in effect a way of branding industrial road. Consider the importance of the architectural style. That's, we do that in Laurel Street. We're planning to do it on Old County Road and El Camino. The lighting, the street lighting makes this statement of identity. And we want to think what image of our industrial district do we wish to convey? And how can we convey that with lighting? I ask you to take advantage of this opportunity to improve the industrial lighting so that it will be making a statement that we wish to convey to people about our industrial district. Let's do it right. Let's wait, if we don't have the money in the project to do it properly now, let's wait until we can accumulate the funds to do it. We're going to, those lights will be standing there for the next 50 years and they will tell the world what we think of industrial road, industrial road in our industrial area. So let's do it right. Let's show that San Carlos is the best place on the peninsula to locate a modern corporation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification from Mr. Black.
Okay, sure.
I just want to make sure that what you're speaking of is the light, what's known as the light standard and the light valence itself. Usually you come and speak to us, Bob, about the spillage of light out of a fixture. But it sounds like in this case, what you're talking about is the light stand and the valence, the architectural elements of the light.
Yeah, the whole light of.
Fixure.
Fixure.
Great.
Stand and everything.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grokot. Thank you, Mr. Black.
Thank you.
Next up, again, I pronounce, probably going to pronounce this wrong, Debbie Bocca Galuppi.
Not going to make an honorary time yet, but.
So you probably remember me from last time. I said something like, and I don't remember, but exactly what I said, but it was something like, "Before you get in bed with these people, you guys need to do your research." So I'm here to say exactly what Glenn says. So at that meeting, I had no idea you guys had already signed on to ICLE. I've been following ICLE for many years now because my parents are cattle ranchers and they are at the impact of ICLE at this very moment. So right now, you get your beef and your agriculture from prime ranchland, but under ICLE, what they want to do is take away all rural areas, which is the new Rural Council under this president, which is to take away all rural land. I also remember mentioning something about red zones, which are no human use zones, and yellow zones. So like Glenn said, and I remember sitting down and going, "Oh my God, these people think I'm a conspiracy theorist," until Matt said something about Agenda 21. And there is way too much information out on the internet for you guys to deny Agenda 21 and ICLE and the relationship. So today, as I knew that normally I'm here about cell phone towers and the devaluation of my property because of these cell phone towers that are being jammed down my throat. So today I knew that I was going to come out and say, "I'm requesting you guys to move yourself, remove yourself. We be the city. San Carlos be the very first city to remove itself from ICLE." So as I was doing a little research today on San Carlos and who represents us, which is you all up there, I've gotten some very interesting research. In fact, one of you go to the same vet that I do and you drive a very non-green car. So for you to be pushing ICLE and be driving the car, then I'm not going to say who it is, but to be driving the car that you drive, I actually happened to be on the phone with my friend Scott about cell phone towers when I saw you pull up with, in your car, and I was dropping my dog off too. It is a non-green car, but what you all are signing on to is all this green crap. So the interesting information that I found out today was on the Wikipedia, which you can believe it or not, but it's about the census from 2000, the year 2000 to the year 2010. And according to the numbers from the census from .gov, back in 2000, we had 27,000, just over 27,000 residents here in San Carlos. So 10 years later, 28,406, not even a thousand people increase in the population of people who own homes. And yet you are planning on building stack-and-pack housing that will accommodate thousands and thousands of people by the year 2035, which is only a five-year difference from the 10-year difference of the two census. Who the heck are you expecting is coming in to move into the area? Thousands, 30,000 people or something is what ICLE is estimating. Who will move into the Bay Area just in this area alone? It's supposed to be 100,000s of people moving into the Bay Area. Who are these people? So before you guys sign further on to ICLE and get more into bed with this supposed greenhouse gas software, which it's not, you need to do the research because you are selling us down a socialist road. And you aren't even telling these people what you are signing on to. You have been lying to these people or you are ignorant. It's one of the two. And how come we citizens, there's a few citizens here who have been doing the research, how come we know more than you do about what you've signed on to? It is frustrating, it is aggravating, and it is completely deplorable what our country and what you guys, this local agenda. Oh, by the way, I even looked up a bag and a party that you.
Mrs. Bocca Galuppi, we're going to need you to start wrapping up.
Okay, I looked up a party, a bag. Everything at this party in Oakland, there was no green initiatives. You guys had wine, you had decorations, you had all these things. So here's my point. If you're going to walk the talk, or if you're going to push us down this socialist movement, I'm requesting either you remove it from us or you start walking the talk. Which means you move from your single-family home and you move into stack-and-pack housing and you get rid of your SUVs.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mario Pellegrini. Mr. Pellegrini, you have two minutes.
I'm equally concerned about this Agenda 21. I moved here in 1985, bought 20 acres, planned to build my house on the hill overlooking the ocean. And I had no idea at all, at the excessive regulation controlling the private property on, in San Mateo and on the coast particularly, I found out that if you want to build your house and it could be seen from a scenic corridor, which would be Highway 1, you can't build it. If it breaks a tree line or a ridge line, above the trees, chimney, can't build it. If they find an arrowhead. line or a ridge line, above the trees, chimney, can't build it. If they find an arrowhead on that property, 20 acres, one arrowhead, that's historic ground. It can be exempt from building. It goes on and on and on. Clearly, it was excessive regulation. And so I built my house. I had to go through the planning department, the building department, the full county commission. It was appealed then, with all those votes in support of my home, to the coastal commission. I had to wait through three, three-month periods to get on the coastal commission agenda. And I waited, and I went, and I got a 9-0 vote for my home. And then it was appealed up to the state Supreme Court. What I'm saying to you is that this excessive regulation is one of the parts of what Agenda 21 is all about. There's a lot more to it than that. But I've witnessed it, and I think that we are losing that thing of the right to private property, a constitutional right that I came here to exercise, like any American wants to. So I want you to think of this not simply as a local problem. It's a problem that's sweeping across the country right now, because the liberties insured in our constitution are what make this, made this country great. And I believe the real solution to the problems we're having now politically with excessive budgets and excessive debt are linked right back to this same thing of turning this country into a socialistic thing where those who need help from the government are going to get it, and it's going to be coming out of the till of the people who are the productive members of the society. And the productive members of society have been taxed now at a rate that's absolutely breaking the country. I don't have to tell you this. You know it. It's on the news every day. So right here in your city, you have an opportunity to play a role in finding out where these seeds of destruction, self-destruction are, and to do something about it before it's too late, when you won't have the options and the choices. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Nina Pellegrini from the Californians for Property Rights.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Nina Pellegrini, and I have, wearing two hats. One, I'm a founding member of Californians for Property Rights, and this concerns me and our organization, because it would be really devaluing our property rights in California, and especially in San Mateo County. Second, I'm talking for myself as a Cuban refugee who came to this country in 1961, and I have seen the devastation of the, the lack of property rights and the lack of individual rights in my country. And I came here, and I'm seeing the same things happening in this country, especially in San Mateo County. And that's what made me, and provoked me, to start Californians for Property Rights. I was walking my dog in my community, and I found, for 20 years I was doing that, and I found a sign suddenly that said, do not walk in this property. You have to have a permission, written permission, by open space only. And it just hit me that something was wrong. If it's open space, why couldn't I walk in this property where I was walking for 20 years? And suddenly, I realized those were the little pebbles of freedoms that I recall in my country, that freedoms lost. It was like a pebble hitting in your head, and you didn't pay attention, because it was little, let's get along. Some freedoms are lost. And till there were so many little pebbles hitting your head that you didn't pay attention to, that they became so big that they were boulders, where I think that this is at the stage that we are now. We are at the boulder stage where the government tells you, right, through regulations and doing things and doing that, that you are, and you might not know that, but I have that, unfortunately, I have that experience, because I lost the country. And I'm warning you, you are walking a very thin line, and that thin line is you're going to lose your freedoms. And that's why I am opposed to what ICLI is all about, because ICLI is an agency of the United Nations and is part of Agenda 21. And that is very much what I experienced in my country. And I'm here to tell you and the rest of the people in this audience, I have the experience. Please listen to what I'm saying to you. Be careful. You're walking a very thin line. And I know that you might not know, and you probably don't know, do your research, because it will affect you and your, your family, your children, and your grandchildren. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Andre Carpe.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpe. I come from Amreville, and my grievance has always been about my solar car. That the San Carlos police mishandled it and protected the teeth to get away from my car. My car is in North Carolina, so you have the responsibility to go get it, because it's your fault. I came here to get my car, and the police prevented me from taking my car. I have the, I'm the one who have the title of property. The person who took it was my manager. He does not have no paper. He has, he has been able to bang boos on you guys, but that's your problem, not my problem. Out of my car, you should get my car. It's your responsibility. You know, you have to face that. I mean, I keep coming here, but I finally, since the car went across the state, then I would have to serve you in a federal court. Perhaps you don't care. Maybe the attorney is looking for business, you know? But it's one of the grievances. I really don't want to go to court. The chief of police is making $10,000 retirement. He has plenty of money and plenty of time now to go get my car. Can he get my car? Can anybody get my car? I mean, you know? And also, I want to mention something, you know? I found it disturbing, Mayor, that you've been caught drunk and driving, I mean, or driving and drunk, or whatever you want to name it. And the thing was just hush, hush on the side, and for you to get to be a mayor there. And that's not right. I don't like it. You know, the mayor of Amreville, he, he was also a dope, and he ran over policemen and kill them. And then one of his colleagues said, oh, you know, it was dark and wet. So I'm looking what kind of excuse you're going to have when you run into somebody, because you have a little drink. You know, I don't know your life, but I mean, this is, this is intolerable. I don't think you should have that job. You should, you should leave it to someone else who is sober. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpe. To respond, you've asked us many times to look into your matter, and since none of us were really on council when this happened, this happened in 2005, I've asked our city manager to look into it, and I think we have a response for you. So, Mr. Malpe, if you'd like to answer, I mean, can you give us a brief on?
Yeah. Through the mayor, if it pleases the council, I'd like to read a report from the June 27, 2005 city council meeting that was prepared by Commander Richard Simprio and Sergeant Doug Echols to Police Chief Gregory Rothis. It reads, Andre Carpe has continually contacted the San Carlos Police Department in an attempt to have us return his solar-powered car, an experimental vehicle. His position has been that we are doing nothing about this situation. However, detectives have thoroughly investigated this case, and the San Mateo County District Attorney has twice reviewed the report and concluded there is not a prosecutable criminal offense. Police Department staff at the district attorney and city attorney all agree that this matter is of civil nature, and as such, needs to be resolved in that arena. Andre Carpe first came to the department, the police department on May 7, 2005, requesting our help in retrieving what was, what he described as a solar-powered car. It has been determined since that the car was part of a corporation and does not specifically belong solely to Andre Carpe. In 1999, a team of people formed a nonprofit organization filing papers as a 501(c)(3) corporation. One of the parties that Andre Carpe implicates, Martin Kibler, in the alleged stealing of the solar vehicle, was a founding member of the team. The company name was Solar Motions. Many people were involved in the design and building of this prototype solar car. Over the course of five years, this prototype solar-powered vehicle was built and raced on a few occasions. Problems started to develop between Andre Carpe and the rest of the team in October 2003. Carpe wanted to race the solar vehicle in Greece in 2004 races. The team could not get enough members interested to fix the car in time for the race. Carpe, however, was insistent and found an English team that would use the Solar Motions car in the race. The team requested Andre Carpe obtain waivers from the English team, so there would be no liability for the Solar Motions group. But Carpe was not willing to do so. Originally, the solar-powered car was registered in Andre Carpe and Martin Kibler's name. When Carpe became upset about the car not being raced in Greece, he went to the DMV in February of 2004 and registered the solar-powered car in his name only. This was viewed as a legal transaction by the DMV, because the vehicle was originally registered in both names. However, the original registration contained the word "or" between the two registered owners' names. When registered in this manner, either of the parties listed on the registration can make changes without the other's approval. The website that features the Solar Motions car indicates that a group of people worked on the car. Each of these members has a stake in the ownership of the vehicle. The website, at the time the vehicle was reported stolen, shows many members of the Solar Motions team as being involved in the project. It does not designate one person as the sole owner. In fact, there were investors who committed a lot of money to have this prototype car built. The case has been rejected twice by the district attorney, California Vehicle Code Section State, in summary, and I quote, "Any person who drives or takes a vehicle not his or her own without the consent of the owner, therefore, and with intent either to permanently or temporarily deprive the owner thereof of his or her title to or possession of the vehicle, whether with or without intent to steal the vehicle." The district attorney has clearly stated that this case does not meet the elements necessary to form a violation of this Vehicle Code Section to the degree that prosecution is the desired course of action. Andre Carpe refuses to look at available alternatives to prosecution. Andre Carpe has the ability to talk directly with Martin Kibler, but chooses not to. Kibler has the car, along with the rest of the team, who still work on it occasionally. Carpe wants to use the San Carlos Police Department as the vehicle for getting the solar-powered car back, but he has been advised that it is a civil issue between all of the involved parties. Other alternatives for Carpe include working with an attorney and filing a civil suit against Martin Kibler and associates of Solar Motion. San Carlos Police Department detectives and members of command staff have spent a considerable number of hours investigating this case and meeting with Mr. Carpe, and have clearly explained to him his available options. It is recommended that the matter be considered closed, which is a direct reflection of the opinions of police investigative staff, the district attorney's office, and the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Malpe.
I have, excuse me, Mayor, because there is, this report there is absolutely misleading. I have never been investigated. The police put me aside, and all this report is from the people who have nothing to do with the solar car. I am the owner. The title is in my name. The, the report that it says there is defamatory, because since they want the car, it has always, always been in my name. I carry the insurance, and I pay everything for the solar car. And I'm the only one who is able to produce the vote for the productivity. No other member. I am the owner of the car. The letter there is misleading, and I don't appreciate that, because that letter, you know, and the version of it has been placated on the internet, and I feel that at this point, it's very difficult for me to correct it, because Mr. Rotto left it to the internet, or the peace of, or the chief of police. And this is what not, I'm entitled to an, to an, to an hearing, and we've had a hearing, and in investigation, I was put aside, and that's unfair. This is grossly unfair. That letter there is no good.
Okay, Mr. Carpe, we've heard you. We've done what you've asked. We've asked our staff to look into it again, and the findings remain from 2005. So you can continue to come here and speak during public comment. That's your right. But we've done what you asked. There's nothing more we can do as a staff. You will have to take it as a civil matter. We've done what you asked, and that's all we can do. I'm sorry.
Then I would have to imply you as aiding and abetting in a grand theft of my solar car, because that's what the police
Your two minutes are up, sir, and you can feel free to come back at any time. Thank you, sir.
Again, you know, you abuse of
I'm a normal man, and you abuse of me. You see?
Sir, we have given you your time. Please sit down.
Well, you know
Sir?
I can always say something about you, you know, that
Sir, I'm not going to ask you again. Please sit down.
You're a bunch of thieves. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we have, and there's no agenda item on this, but is Frank Hensley speaking in public comment? All right. Mr. Hensley.
Good evening. Sorry for not filling out the agenda item, but I'm also here to speak against ICLI and the city's participation in ICLI. I'm all for green. I'm all for building technologies and using the proper chemicals and things that make our lives healthier. And there's ways to do this without participating in ICLI, Agenda 21, or A-BAG. And as such, I encourage the city to completely remove themselves from ICLI, from A-BAG, and all the programs involved with both of those organizations, and continue to go down the green path and find greener ways of doing things and doing things the right way. And there are citizens in this audience who are more than willing to work with the city on this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. And we'll be moving on. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to approval of consent calendar, which is Item 7. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. I have one request. Mr. Black, is this for 7L? Okay, so 7L will be removed by the public. Any council members wish to remove any items? Seeing none, can I get a motion with Item 7L removed?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendars, Items 7A through K and Item 7M through Q.
Is there a second?
Second, Pat.
Seconded by Mr. Royce. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Gerselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Brokrokat?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis is absent. Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Mr. Black, would you like to come up and issue your comments about Item 7L, and then we will discuss?
I'm Bob Black, and thank you for hearing me. I just have questions about 7L. I'm wondering, it was what was not said by the staff report rather than what's in it. And I'm not sure why it is that we are not joining a pool with others who have the same investment principles as are laid out, and therefore cut our administrative costs in managing our investments. And I'm wondering why we're considering the derivative investments at all, with the problems that have been shown with the, with the very clever derivatives. And furthermore, I noticed that the Administrative Services Director is the one who would make a decision on that. And I'm wondering if the Administrative Services Director's job requirements include the skills that would be necessary for performing that task. So these are just questions that I have, and I'd hope we could have a little bit of illumination before we pass this particular subject.
Absolutely, Mr. Black.
Thank you.
Mrs. Menon Hall, can you come up and answer some of those questions for us? And then any questions from the council can follow.
Good evening. So the majority of our investments are in Local Agency Investment Fund, or LEAF, which is a state-controlled pool, and also the San Mateo County Investment Pool. The investment policy before you tonight allows for broad use of derivatives. We don't currently have them, and any change outside of what our investment structure is now would be brought to the The investment policy before you tonight allows for broad use of derivatives. We don't currently have them, and any change outside of what our investment structure is now would be brought to the investment committee, which consists of the city treasurer, the city manager, the assistant city manager, and myself.
So, to summarize, we are in two pools, and we're currently not in a program with derivatives, and if we were to get in one, it would have to go to the committee, which includes an elected official?
Yes.
Okay. So are there any questions from the council? If not, can we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve 7L.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Gersili?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, we'll be moving on to Item 8A. This is a report to council, presentation discussion of a conceptual feasibility study for formation of a stormwater utility district. Mr. Savay.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council, if you'll excuse me while I get the PowerPoint presentation up. As new development has occurred in urban areas, falling rain has fewer places to soak into the ground in a gradual way, and runoff on hard surfaces occurs faster and in greater volumes. And increased stormwater runoff can worsen flooding, erosion, and water pollution, and also damage creeks and stream habitat. Stormwater facilities are engineered facilities that are designed to convey water runoff, remove pollutants, and control water flow during storms, and these facilities include pipes and ditches, swales, filters, ponds, and vaults in the ground. In addition to helping prevent flooding and erosion, stormwater facilities help to protect water quality by incorporating features that filter the water before it gets into our stormwater drainage system and remove sediment and other toxic chemicals before they get into the bay. A city council strategic plan objective charged staff with preparing a feasibility report regarding the evaluation of a stormwater facility or utility. Repairing, improving, and maintaining our stormwater management facilities are becoming a greater financial burden on cities in the state of California, and we've made a number of findings in this report, and there are a variety of funding mechanisms available to cities in California that have, that cities have employed to provide the funds necessary to improve, operate, and maintain stormwater management facilities and activities. And these mechanisms, as you can see, some of them on the screen there require some form of voter approval. Setting up a stormwater utility, utility district can be done without a funding mechanism, but most cities don't do it that way. If you're going to fund a capital improvement project, you have to set up a fee, and I'll discuss a number of these findings in the presentation. In terms of some of the legal requirements that we discovered, Proposition 218 that was approved in 1996 set forth a path for stormwater utility funding that has to go to the voters. And this is a different way than, say, for our wastewater facilities, which can be set forth through user fees. NPDES, or the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, is a very expensive and an unfunded mandate that cities have to do, and it requires us to go out and do inspections on facilities to make sure that they aren't putting toxic chemicals into our storm drain system and draining into the bay, and we also need to maintain our own facilities to make sure that our city facilities don't do that either. In terms of funding mechanisms, there are a variety of funding mechanisms that cities in California have employed to provide funding necessary to improve and maintain and manage stormwater management facilities and activities, and the council can enact development fees while any tax has to go to the voters. One other consideration is that none of these funding mechanisms is, has a nexus necessarily with the establishment of a utility district. This is a separate organizational decision, and property-related fees have less flexibility and have more specific usage requirement, and special taxes are for flexibility but have a much higher standard to pass. There are numerous steps and decisions in creating a stormwater funding mechanism or tax program to fund a stormwater utility. The steps in the blue areas there would be our next steps if we were to go forward and do a more comprehensive study, and the points in white would be used only if the council decided to move forward after looking at that feasibility study. There are a couple of examples of cities, local cities, who have initiated and passed some kind of a funding mechanism for stormwater facilities, and in both cases, more specific property-related fees were passed following failed voter attempts. And in Palo Alto, for instance, they're funding their capital improvement program for their, their actual facilities and also the NPDS things, too. This table shows some of the annual fees associated with some of the communities that we looked at in other California cities, and these fees vary widely, and they, you can see that they're scalable to medium home price, it appears, and also average income. And the recommendation in this report is to recommend that staff complete a more comprehensive report that would include a determination of the costs, rate study evaluating the affordability of the cost, and review of other options. And I've asked Chuck Anderson and Dan Schaaf from Schaaf &amp; Wheeler, our consultant on the strategic plan objective, to join me this evening in answering any of the questions from the city council, and I'm available to answer any questions, and that concludes the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Savay. And just to clarify, this is just a report, we will not be taking any action tonight.
Just a report, although it is recommended that you give us action whether you'd like us to continue with a more comprehensive study on this issue, this is sort of an overview, although the report is fairly detailed, kind of lays it out.
Okay.
So we are looking for that guidance.
Okay. I don't have any public comment cards for the rest of the evening, so if someone would like to speak on 8A, feel free to do so now, and I'll do that after every item from here on out, since we don't have any more cards from anyone. You can fill that out after you're done speaking, Ms. Bocci Galuppi.
You're becoming well-known, huh? So I looked up your website, and your number-one client is Cargill Salt, and Cargill Salt is signed on with ICLI, which is all about genetically-modified foods. So when you start putting, like, just putting the money, following the money, you can follow the money to ICLI. So my question to you, and you don't have to answer, I'm from Schaaf &amp; Wheeler, is it? Schaaf &amp; Wheeler?
Mr. Savay, I'm from the city of San Carlos.
Okay. So my question to you is, like, what is your ultimate goal? And clearly, from looking at your client list, your ultimate goal is not to protect the citizens of San Carlos.
Ms. Bocci Galuppi, Mr. Savay works for the city of San Carlos, you're speaking to Schaaf &amp; Wheeler, who is our onsite engineer.
Perfect.
And that's not who you're talking to.
Okay, so my request for the city, then, is to continue doing the research on ICLI and Agenda 21, and I think when you start doing the research, you're going to find a common denominator in all of this, which a lot of us have done already over the past five, 10, some people 20 years. And, and stormwater and water is important. In fact, part of the goal of ICLI is to take away all private property rights, adjudicated riparian water rights, and anytime you put water involved in the situation where a closed system, water does not leave this earth, you're going to have storm systems everywhere. Water does not leave this earth, and my request, once again, is before you guys start, you know, believing what you're being told, start believing or looking into what some other people are telling you, and I remember Matt Grocott, Councilmember Matt Grocott, requesting all, from all of you, last meeting was to get an unbiased or get the other side of the story, and I'm asking that, too. And again, stormwater is also, if you look at ICLI and Agenda 21 and all of the documents, Codex, Alimentarius, they all talk about stormwater as well, and it's the same, you're talking about the same monster, and it's control.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Brian Randall, San Carlos, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman. We've had big discussions on the past on preventing the water from getting into, onto the road surface and going down the storm drains, and the, one of the answers was to have a concrete which lets the water go down into the earth where it's supposed to go. I would like you to look into that. Again, I believe we studied what was going on in Seattle, who have a very good system. But the thing that gets me is the cement, the road, the surface, the concrete surfaces where the water could go through into the earth instead of flowing out onto the road and into storm drains. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Okay, we are open up for questions from the council. Mr. Grocott, do you have anything?
Well, just a comment on it, I, I don't know if I have any questions, and I'm not sure I'm ready to, it sounds like staff is looking for a consensus on our part to move forward with the feasibility study, and I'll start with that. I'm not ready to do that. You know, this, there's enough here that we should either be taking action or not taking action, not just moving something forward on a consensus item. So if it needed to be brought back and put on the agenda as an action item, then let's do that. And the concern I have with this project is that, you know, it was, not to lay claim to it, but years ago when I first got on council, and then when I was the mayor, I pushed on this issue, but I was pushing on it in a different fashion, and what I was looking for was more of a study on our whole watershed. Where's the water coming from? Where's it going? How's it trying to get to the bay? And how do we address that as, as an issue to prevent flooding, which was the issue? And the reason I took it on is because we, at that time, we were getting a lot of homeowners in the White Oaks neighborhood and, and over by Eaton, getting in touch with the council members at the time, saying, "Look, our homes are flooding every time we have a big storm. The city needs to do something about it." At that time, the city engineer wanted to do, of course, something that was engineering-oriented, and there were some folks, Len Matterman, who's a specialist in this area, lives in town here on, in San Carlos, was talking to me about, "Look, there's a, there's a different way to approach this, and it's not to do the engineering, but it's to do something more on the line of what the previous speaker was talking about, Mr. Randall, where you, you look at ways to get the water to go into the ground and not out onto your streets and into your stormwater system." Just one last comment, when, when we were talking about this before, one of the angles on it was to try to do something in concert with our southern neighbor, being Redwood City, because the area of our town that was flooding the most is adjacent with Redwood City, and then also the county, because it was recognized that some of this watershed area is areas like Edgewood Park and so forth, which is, you know, upstream from us. And actually, there was some, some effort that was made at the time, where we did try to get the three agencies together, we were talking to the board of supervisors, they started on something, but it never, it never went anywhere and never materialized into something of effect. So here we are today, now, looking at doing something on our own, and I'm a little disappointed at that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grocott. Mr. Royce?
Just a few thoughts, you know, we're fortunate to have watershed coming down from the hills, it's much better than being on a flat city. However, water creates issues. Mr. Grocott mentioned this, Pete Littman, who worked, he was an expert on a lot of the creeks and so forth. I have a creek in my backyard, and I also walk all the way up to Devonshire where the source is, and it's interesting how, how development and things start changing the water flow right from the source up on the hills. And you get down through the houses, and then, of course, we all know, it doesn't become an issue until it, it hits down in the low part, closer to Highway 101, crossing over to get to the bay. And when you have a hundred-year storm, and you also have a, a high tide, the physics defines it as a flood. So there definitely needs to be, you know, work done. All of us deserve a safe and dry driveway, and the people who suffer are in the lowlands, but it's caused by everything that happens through, throughout the city. And having an understanding of the process and a fee structure, it's long-term capital improvements that need to be done. And it's also a legal, legal issue. One of the things on the creek is, most of our creeks have a house on one side and a house on the other, and we, as a city, just can't go in there with a backhoe and kind of clean it out every year. So we depend on homeowners who, who have put riffraff and railroad ties and all sorts of things, and with the first storm, all that stuff goes flying down the creek. So, and there's palm trees that start growing, so it's a very complex area of working with citizens, but I think we all have the same attention, but what I'm focusing on, we all have a responsibility when it comes to the cycle of, of water from the sky to our, through our watershed, to, 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 to the bay.
So do you have a recommendation on how you'd like to-
Yes, I would, I think there's, this is a great report, and I think it's, and I think it's so worth it to start looking at an investigation here on some long-term planning.
So you'd like to move forward in the, with the study?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gersili?
I think it's, I agree with Mr. Royce, it is a great report. I'd be absolutely stunned and shocked if it didn't come back that, that said that we needed to have a, an election in a 218. So do I get paid $8,500 to come with that conclusion? I mean, I, I can't be, I can't understand how it wouldn't come back with that. If we were going to work on whether we, how we're going to do this stormwater, that's a whole nother gig for me, but to tell me that, that I need to, to have a financing mechanism, which you've described in great detail in this report, it's a great report, we've got to have an election, we've got to have a, we've got to have something to do. I, I'm confused why, why it means this. I honest, I, I am really confused.
So you are leaning towards Mr. Grocott, if it's going to come back, you just want to come back with an action item, as opposed to funding a study?
Yeah, I, I think we need to, we have, we need to have a plan, no, no question, but let's work on a plan for fixing it, not a plan for financing it, at least in my opinion.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
No, that's, that's valid. And the only thing I have to say is, this is, has been echoed by most of the council members, this is one of the major complaints in the city of San Carlos that I've heard for the two years I've been up here, is, is the flooding. We hear it constantly from the business owners down across El Camino and from the White Oaks neighborhood. And, you know, a lot of it's pointed to past mistakes. When we developed this city, we didn't do a really good job of hooking everything together. So I agree with Mr. Gersili and Mr. Grocott, I don't think we need to fund, we don't need to fund a plan to finance it, I think we just need to decide if we're going to go forward or not. So I, too, would like to see this come back as an action item with actual action items involved, where it says we can do this, this, or that, and I think we put it to an election and we see what the, what the people want. So I think that's your direction, Mr. Savay, with three people up here leaning that way. Okay, thank you. We'll be moving on to Item 8B, report on website redesign and enhancements. Who's going to be up? Mr. Sawicki.
There's a PowerPoint here, if I can get to it. What? Clicking, but.
I'll bet you an half for it.
I don't know why that's-
That's true. I don't know, my, my dad's pretty good at it, too.
There you go. Sorry for the delay.
This isn't speaking well for our website redesign, Mr. Sawicki.
No, no. So as you can tell, we need a website redesign.
Mary, you had nothing to do with this, Mary, right? Nothing to do with this, that's it. Deny, deny it. Yeah, re-look.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Mark Sawicki, Economic Development and Housing Manager. One of the city council's current six-month strategic objectives is to investigate website redesign and enhancements and recommend options for direction in conjunction with the city's marketing, branding, and business attraction and retention project.
A council ad hoc subcommittee, including Mayor Klein and Councilmember Lewis, provided input on the branding applications and website redesign options in early August. With us tonight are Mary Schwedhelm and Betsy Todd from Look Design, and they will present the redesigned website, actually a couple of options on it.
Now for the fun part of the meeting, right?
Exactly.
It's nice to see all of you or honored to be here. As Mark said, this is just the application or the redesign of the website based on the new brand that was chosen, and we have two options for you. We took... Let's see if we can do this right quick. Okay. So it's round two, because we presented the first round to a subcommittee, and they had made some comments, and we made our changes. So we're just going to kind of show you those two options. This is option one. So one of our goals was to look at the cities... A lot of cities in the area that we thought were best to breed, or not necessarily in the area, all over the place, to sort of get the best practices for what was going on and realize that San Carlos itself, the website itself, had some really good stuff going on that we wanted to retain. We just wanted to change the look and feel and update the architecture somewhat so that it wasn't so redundant and to make it more lively and to bring the city of San Carlos kind of alive through the website so that when you're on the site, you're visiting the city to some degree. So one of our ideas was to... This is option one, is to have a flipping that where play here is... This would be left, right? So that would be work here, die in here. This is showing really light on here right now. You can... It's much clearer, actually, on a website. So that would be a flash where those images would go through, kind of showcasing, for now showcasing work, die, and shop, live. Later on, they could be showcasing, you know, some events that are happening, the farmer's market, you know, the Hiller Museum, the chickens' ball, whatever. But it would be kind of a large bit of real estate that really gets people engaged in the site itself. Betsy, do you have anything you want to say? So then, just to show you how this architecture might work, if we were to... Oh, this is the bottom of the site, so if you scroll down, that's how it'll look. We wanted to put some templates in on the left where the actual photos and... Because a lot of the articles recall first photos are some icons, and we could also develop some icons up, but so that it's really clean, it always has a nice little yellow border, and you don't have any rogue, weird photos going on over there. The quick links are still there, and some of the architecture's very much the same. This would be another... The dropdown, so if you go to the government set, showing you how that might work, that's how the government dropdown would look. And then if you went to city departments and divisions in that, this is how that would look. So we're retaining... We're bringing back that little bit of posterization and those little dots kind of from the overall brand has a bit of that in the posterization of the photos and the illustrations. Do you have anything? Okay. So that was option one, had the yellow background. This is option two. Very similar. It was suggested to us that we... There was a suggestion to put some color in the actual area of the... The center area of the site. So the yellow is gone that sort of defined that area, and the color is actually in the site itself. Same thing is happening on the top. This is the bottom of the site. So you can see that the blue is now... The color is now in the text area where before the yellow was around the text area framing it. Same exact dropdown. That's only... That's kind of the major difference. And then once you're... Once you're at the government side, this is how it would look. And the same thing would be for visitors. So you always know where you are, because you go over to the left, and you could always go back to that government section if you want to go visit some of the other areas in the government section. We thought it'd be fun to put the weather up there, so the weather will always be there.
And it's always going to be 75 degrees and sunny, right?
Always.
As long as we keep that.
Yeah. So that's kind of it. Those are the two options. We're really sort of pushing the first option. We like that a lot. We like that the outside defines the white space, because we think that putting color on that behind that text might be... Just might not be as readable.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to open this up first for public comment. Is there any public comment on item 8B? Okay, we'll go to council questions and discussion. The only thing I'm going to add, as the only member of the subcommittee who's here, is option two, which had the blue bleeding in the background. Brad was really big on that. We didn't... He pushed very hard to see that, and I don't know what he would think about the difference between the two, but that's the reason that that's there. He pushed very heavily. He wanted some sort of bleeding color in the background.
We didn't interpret that at all, so we didn't even come out there.
Yeah. So you showed them both. So those two... Mr. Lewis or Councilman Lewis was very, very big on having some color back there and not just having it be all white. But on that, what they've shown is a pretty accurate portrayal of what we've asked for. So any council questions or discussion? Mr. Grisilli?
You know, terrible... I guess bad eyes and... And I'm very old. I couldn't see the difference between the two sites from this angle. So I mean, maybe I should stand out there, but Mary, we need to speak up to the thing, otherwise we won't pick it up.
Yeah, there are very subtle differences. The first options we showed to the committee, EDA committee, were quite different, and they selected one. And then we brought it to another, to the subcommittee, who said, "Yeah, looks great. Let's put some color back there."
So the only difference between the first two is just sort of the color in the background? That's it?
Can you flip through really quickly?
How do we get back here? I'm afraid to do anything on this.
I just couldn't see the difference.
Yeah. So here's... Well, go back. Go back to that one that you just...
Option one.
Okay.
So option one, the difference is the yellow is on the borders.
Yeah, and if you could go down, then the next. Go back to option one and show the bottom of the page. I think that's... See how much yellow is around that?
Yeah.
It's soft. We don't want it... We actually showed it all white.
I understand.
When it was added. So we didn't want it to be too blatant.
Okay.
But that's the difference. And then when you go to option two, you'll see that the color is actually in the area of the text.
In the box.
Okay. So the way it functions and the way it works, the drops, all the way you connect, everything's exactly the same. We're just talking about a soft yellow or a little bit...
Or we're talking about that center space being defined by the color around it, the yellow around it. We're actually putting the color into the...
Okay. And every page would be the same, then? When I say every page would be the same, they'd have the color?
Yes. It would either be on the outside of that or on the inside of it.
Okay. So we're talking about outside yellow?
We don't want to get tutti-frutti and changing the color all the time.
I understand. I'm just asking, because I just don't understand. So it's either outside yellow or inside blue?
And Look's recommendation...
Is that it? I mean, that's it?
And Look's recommendation is to go with the outside color.
Outside color.
That's what we like. I mean, you can speak to it, Betsy.
One of the challenges is that in the latest news, since different groups are going to be populating that content, we're a little bit concerned that if they're doing it on their own, having a color behind it may cause a problem. Unless we, you know, put a rule around there saying you're going to have a yellow three-point rule that'll define that area. But we just want to make it very usable for all the groups in the city, so there are no readability issues.
Okay.
With all due respect to my colleague who isn't here, I mean, you guys do it for a living. And, you know, I would take your recommendation for the yellow, and so, like you just mentioned, that's the... Wouldn't bump into it.
Okay. Mr. Royce?
Yeah, I have no problem going with option one. Just to back up a step here, though, you know, a lot of this change, too, is going to change our existing website now, which is not that friendly or that clear, because as you go to page one, you're not at this point yet. You're still at a point where it's just list all the current activities that are going on. You have to click a second time to really get into government or other areas, so that needs to change.
And we're actually in the process of that if... When Mrs. Mendenhall wants to talk about that.
This is our handoff, right?
Yeah. This is the handoff.
So Mrs. Mendenhall?
So phase two would actually address that issue. It would involve enhancing the navigation. So when you go into the website and the dropdowns and such, that would be what we would look at. And so we will have... We'll be working with the council ad hoc subcommittee, an interdepartmental committee, cross-functional, so that each department can look at the navigation for each of their areas. And then, once we have a prototype built, the idea is that we would do some community outreach to make sure that the usability is functional.
Sure. Okay. So again, just to continue on, using... Getting to a point where the... That you could identify more the value, you know, getting to government or, you know, other items is very important. However, I'm also interested in, rather than redeveloping the whole site ourselves, is I know there are other cities that have done a great job. I know like the city of... What is it? Of... Can't think of it right now. Of... Down the peninsula. Or this been one real quick example. San Mateo, the county, redid their websites about two years ago, and they did a really incredible job. In fact, I was part of the task force, one of the early study group on this whole thing. And so rather than, you know, starting from scratch on all this stuff, there are some good cities that we could lend some value on and get some really good quality, you know, data on how we develop our website. A lot of cities that don't do a great job, but starting from scratch on everything, I'd like to do a combination of doing what we want to do, but also leveraging from some of the leaders out there and borrowing some of their stuff to do our website, too.
Through the chair, that is our intent. Is we've already been looking at a number of websites, not just in the area, but across the nation.
That's great. Super. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grokot.
The only comment I have is I like the part that scrolls through at the top. And I don't know what the intent is there in terms of what you're going to use for material to put in there, but what I'm hoping would show there is actual San Carlos scenes from the city. And, you know, bottom line, I know what... I've been to different cities' websites, and one of the things that I find nice about some of them is when you go to the website, you can tell what that city is like, because you get to see it. And that's after all, if you don't live there and you go to the city's website, that's what you're after anyways, is to get an idea of what does this place look like? What's it feel like? And so if we have pictures up there that scroll through about, you know, work, play, live, and so forth, and it's actually scenes of San Carlos, I think that's fantastic.
Mr. Grokot, to address that? The subcommittee discussed that with Look Design, and we've even discussed possibly having a contest for people to capture photos of San Carlos to put there, and so it really would be emblematic of who we are. Those are just placeholders as of now.
Okay, very good. And I guess the only caution, and you guys probably were, this city tourniquet tell you, I know from doing some website work and so forth, you've got to be careful of people's actual faces, right? Especially kids. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grokot. I have nothing further to add, and I've added all my comments in the subcommittee, so great job, and looking forward to another report shortly.
So we're going to do one, then?
So, yeah. Are you guys okay with option one?
I like the... Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to go with option one, then. Okay, moving on to item 8C. Report to council.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Don't we have to talk about path... The paths here, too?
Oh, sorry. I completely skipped that. Ms. Mendenhall, you need to give us a presentation on which path to...
That's the question I have.
Yeah. Sorry, Mr. Grisilli.
Thanks, Mayor.
If you would like to discuss the two options.
Yes, so there's two options. The first path would be that we would just upgrade our existing content management software. And if we were to do that, we could roll out the... We could update the navigation and such, probably within a nine-to-12-month timeframe. If we go with path two, that would be to select another vendor, so that would be an RFP process, and that would probably add another four months to the process.
Okay. Are there any questions from council? Mr. Grisilli?
How much cost though? How much for each one?
Well, we have a budget in the budget right now, in the capital budget, of $100,000. So depending on the upgrade, there will be some amount of money to pay for an upgrade. And then if we... The intent is also to get a consultant in here to assist us with the website redesign, so use the budget for that. So all the money would be within the existing budget.
Right, but we have... We don't really have any kind of an estimate, whether it would cost $75,000 to path one or $150,000 to path two or anything.
No, we're still looking into that. We're looking to see what other content management software is out there. Ideally, we'd like to maintain the same one. And if it's able to support mobility and some of the features that we'd like, we'll probably just go with the upgrade, which is at a minimal cost.
Yeah, I'm not adverse... I'm not adverse to spending, you know, more money, because this is the... This is really the entrance to... You know, don't get me wrong, I'm not adverse to it. I just was trying to understand what the difference was, and it doesn't bother me if it takes a few extra months and costs extra money if it's done in a better way than the first one. I'm not going for the economical way. I'm looking for the best way. That's all. I was just wondering what our parameters were, and apparently, you know, because we haven't had, I guess, had a chance to go out yet, we basically have this $100,000 nut, and it could be less, it could be more. We're not really sure yet.
Yes. If we decide that we want... We're looking at other software now, just, you know, primarily just researching it. We haven't decided if we're going to do an RFP or not. But if we do an upgrade, that would be at a less...
Yeah, it's difficult for me to take one of these paths, and I have no idea what they might cost.
Well, those are still under consideration. So right now, we're not asking for...
Oh, you're not?
...your approval on path one or path two.
Okay, I thought you were.
No, we've just started those discussions with the subcommittee.
Oh, just receive a report. I apologize. I'm sorry.
But we wanted her to explain what the both paths were, and you'll come back with more information.
Yes, there'll be much more information as we move along.
I'm sorry, I missed the receiving report part. Thanks.
Are there any questions? Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Mendenhall. We will move on.
And if it's, if it's able to support mobility and some of the features that we'd like, we'll probably just go with the upgrade, which is at a minimal cost.
Yeah, I'm not adverse, I'm not adverse to spending, you know, more money, because this is the, this is, this is really the entrance to, you know, don't get me wrong, I'm not adverse to it. I just was trying to understand what the difference was, and it doesn't bother me if it takes a few extra months and costs extra money if it's done in a better way than the first one. I'm not going for the economical way, I'm looking for the best way. That's all. I was just wondering what our, what our parameters were, and apparently, we, you know, because we haven't had, I guess, had a chance to go out yet, we, we basically have this $100,000 nut, and it could be less, it could be more.
Yes.
We're not really sure yet.
Yes. If we decide that we want, if we're looking at other software now, just, you know, primarily just researching it. We haven't decided if we're gonna do an RFP or not.
Yeah.
But if we do an upgrade, that would be at a less, at a more minimal cost.
Yeah. It's difficult for me to take, to take one of these paths, and I have no idea what they might cost.
Well, those are still under consideration. So, right now, we're not asking for...
Oh, you're not?
...your approval on Path One or Path Two.
Okay. I thought you were.
No, we, we've just started those discussions with the Subcommittee.
Oh, just receive a report. I apologize.
It's just the receiving report.
I'm sorry.
But I wanted her to explain what the both paths were, and you'll come back with more information.
I got it.
Yes, there'll be much more information as we move along.
Receiving report. I'm sorry, I missed the receiving report part. Thanks.
Are there any questions? Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Mendenhall. We will move on. Item 8C, Report to Council, Change in Service Termination Date and Dissolution Date of Belmont-Sancos Fire Department. Mr. Mora.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. As you know from your strategic plan, staff visits the Council from time to time to give you updates on key milestones on the project to create the San Carlos Fire Department. And this particular item, this is a report to Council, no action required, because the Fire Board, at the Fire JP, took this action last week, and that was to change the service termination date from October 12th to September 30th. And the reason for that was a request from the Belmont staff to have the service termination date coincide with the end of a financial quarter. Council will probably recall that when San Carlos initially sent the dissolution letter in April of 2010, we suggested this very date, and at the time, we received a rather aggressive letter from the Belmont Special Attorney suggesting that he was not amenable to that. However, as we've approached the wrap-up date, Belmont staff now has decided that that probably is a pretty good idea. We concur. Both cities recommended that to Fire Board, and as the two Fire Commissioners know, that action was taken. So, this, again, is provided solely for your information. Any questions? Be happy to.
Are there any, is there any public comment on this report? Okay, seeing none. Are there any questions from the Council? Okay. Well, we don't need to take any action on this, so thank you, Mr. Mora. Moving on to Public Hearing, 9A, Consideration of an Appeal of Planning Commission Approval of Conditional Use Permit and Architectural Review Permitting Six New Antennas Co-locating on the Two Existing Antenna Support Structures at 260 Shelford Avenue, APN 049195080. This is recommended to be continued to September 26, 2011. Mr. Savae, do you have a report?
If the Council wishes for me to give a report, I certainly will, but this is a request for continuance by the applicant. It will also allow staff time to do a peer study, which we haven't completed yet.
Okay. We're not gonna need the report, Mr. Savae. And the public hearing's still open, correct, Mr. Rubens? So, we don't need to do any action?
That's correct. The public hearing would still be open, and the recommendation is to continue the public hearing to, um, September 26.
Before we get to that, Mr. Grisilli, is there anyone who wishes to publicly comment on Item 9A? Okay. Mr. Randall.
Mr. Mayor, gentlemen. As you know, I became involved with those antennas, and I'm opposed to any additional antennas up there. Also, at the last meeting, I took along a box, and the box had walls, and it was insulated, and you had the ability to, there was, somebody produced a sound inside, and you had the ability to take the lid off the box. And as soon as you took the lid off the box, of course, the noise came out. Now, these, this new equipment they're talking about putting up there, they're putting a wooden fence around it, and it's not gonna stop the noise coming out, which is, which has been a big problem over the years, for many years. And as the saying goes, when you get a noisy situation, you say, "Put the lid on it." And that's what should be done this time. That equipment should be put in a building with a roof on it. It's so obvious, but sometimes, I think this company is playing games with you and us. This goes on and on and on over the years, and it could be resolved, could have been resolved quite easily. Until I made an appearance, things had been going, rolling along for years and years. And when they saw that I was getting interested in bringing gadgets in to demonstrate what was going on, they, they decided to do something about it, and, and that was resolved. That is an old problem. They have resolved it because I became involved. Now, they wanna put all these, this new equipment up there with more noise, and they're, they're taking it right up to the limit. There's a light now, they're not below the limit, and it's obvious to me that they should put it in a building with a roof on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Grisilli?
Mr. Rubens, we need a motion to continue this.
You would need a, you would need a motion to continue the public hearing to the, the date recommended, September 26, 2011.
I'd make that motion that we continue this until September 26, then.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Grokot. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to Unfinished Business, Item 10A, Consideration of Adopting Ordinance Number 1434, which extends urgency ordinance 1433 pursuant to Government Code Section 65858A, the Massage Moratorium. Is this you, Mr. Rubens?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor. As, as fairly clear from the agenda's description, what, what we have tonight is an extension of the existing moratorium that you enacted last month in July. The moratorium would expire on the 25th of August if we do not extend it tonight. What we, what I'm recommending, and the Chief of Police is recommending, is that we extend the urgency ordinance for 10 months and 15 days to allow for further study. I might add that I was approached by the representative of the California Massage Therapy Association, and they want to work with us on developing a new ordinance. We also would like to see the results from the County of San Mateo's study of this same issue. The, the moratorium would essentially stop new massage establishment permits, but would allow, for some exceptions, for existing businesses so that persons who have the nonconditional certificates can continue to operate in existing businesses.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rubens. Is there any public comment on Item 10A? Seeing none, we'll go to Council Questions. Mr. Grokot, do you have anything?
I have a question that, I know we had a business owner in here last time, and her concern, I think, if I understood it correctly, was selling her business and handing it over to whoever bought it. And I think her concern was, the more we do this, the more difficult it is for her to sell her business and have someone else continue it. Can you address that?
Well, one, one of the exceptions is intended to cover that type of a situation, that we have an existing massage therapy business that has everyone in the business with a nonconditional certificate under this. That is something that we, we could allow on a discretionary basis, but it would be essentially the issuance or reissuance of a new massage establishment permit.
Would there be any additional costs than there might have been otherwise?
I don't think so. They, they would have to satisfy that, that new requirement that we don't have under, we didn't have, excuse me, under the old ordinance, to establish that everyone in the business has an unconditional certificate from the California Massage Therapy Association. But other than that, I can't think of any additional costs.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grokot. Mr. Royce, do you have anything? Mr. Grisilli, do you have anything?
No, just to make a motion.
Okay. Let's make a motion.
I'll make a motion to, make sure I use the right word here, adopt ordinance number 1434.
Correct.
Extension of Urgency Ordinance 1433 imposing a moratorium on massage... It's just, I'm reading this, and it doesn't make any sense. Imposing a moratorium on massage on the issuance, is that right?
10A. There appears to be a missing word.
Or something. I don't know. It doesn't seem to make any sense.
Massage establishments.
Imposing a moratorium on a massage establishment on the issu... Still doesn't make any sense to me, but I...
The comma on the issuance of any business registration or...
I'm sorry. I apologize, but could, extension of urgency ordinance 1433 imposing a moratorium...
Oh.
Okay?
Okay.
On, is there a, is there a word missing? A com...
Establishment.
On massage establishment, comma. It should be, I think there's probably an extra word or two in there. Imposing a moratorium on the issuance of any business registration or any new, or expansion of any existing permits for massage establishments in the City of San Carlos. I think we have...
So, we're taking on massage out, essentially?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. I can read that.
Won't you give another try, then, Mr. Grisilli?
Sure. Take on massage out. I can handle that. Extension of Urgency Ordinance 1433 imposing a moratorium on the issu... Now, it makes sense. On the issuance of any business registration or any new or expansion or any existing permits for massage establishments in the City of San Carlos pursuant to Government Code 65858A.
Second that. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Moving on to Item 10B, Approve Amendments to the City Strategic Plan and Six-Month Objective Matrix. Mrs. Mendenhall.
It's the public. We're on vacation, so I'm sorry that we're a little rusty tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is an update on the city's strategic plan. If you remember, on February 18th, the Council met with the City Manager and the Department Directors for the 11th time to discuss the city's strategic issues and goals. This report will serve as our August 2011 monthly report. There are a few housekeeping items to the report that's in your packet tonight. Initially, there was only one request to revision, and that was to move the date that the staff will present a plan to move police dispatch to the county from August 1st to September 12th. This revision is due to the timing of the negotiations with the county. In addition to that, there are also four, four items that will move to the next meeting, and those are, and I apologize, this was kind of a last-minute change. The, to present to City Council for consideration a policy on electronic communications and devices, developing a protocol and system to inform the public regarding urgent events and crises, developing a protocol for informing the public about changes or potential changes in the law or city programs, and presenting to the City Council for consideration a declaration for San Carlos to accept the Charter for Compassion, thus designating itself as a compassionate city. So, with those five items, they would move to the September 12th agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Mendenhall. And just so the Council knows normally, this is where I would lecture staff about moving things, but this one was my fault. We had a very large agenda based on, we were gonna have many topics on RDA, and due to the, what happened with the Supreme Court, we had pulled those prior, and then the Supreme Court happened, so we pulled the RDA stuff, and there wasn't time to get it back on the agenda. So, this was, I did this in conjunction with the City Manager, and they will be coming back shortly, but we were trying not to have an extremely long meeting with all the RDA stuff. We imagined that was gonna take a lot of time. So, that's my fault. I will lecture myself. Are there any, is there any public comment on Item 10B? Seeing none. Are there any questions from Council members?
I have a question. I hope I'm okay on this, but it just occurred to me that when we hold these meetings, and we have one coming up on the 29th...
29th.
29th. Do we typically invite the city treasurer?
Yes.
Okay. He just, so he chooses not to attend?
He's, he's attended a couple...
I know. Yeah. Okay. But when he's not there, it's by, by choice. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Seeing none. Can we have a motion? Does anyone want to approve these?
I'll, I'll make a motion here to approve the changes reflected in the attached strategic plan six-month matrix.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Grokot. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Mendenhall. Oh, you're gonna stay up here. So, we're now moving on to New Business, Item 11A, which has a subsection of 11AI. So, we'll start with 11A. Consideration of Resolution Approving Transitional Memorandum of Understanding, MOUs, Regarding Dissolution of the Belmont-Sancos Fire Department Between the Agency and the Fire Management Unit, FMU, and the International Association of Firefighters Local 2400 Firefighters Union. So, we'll start with that one. Mrs. Mendenhall.
Yes. So, before you tonight is a Transitional Memorandum of Understanding regarding the dissolution of the Belmont-Sancos Fire Department. This was done in association with the International Association of Firefighters Local 2400 and the Fire Management Unit. Since this is a major decision, the Fire Board has approved this, but it has to come back to the Councils for their approval. So, over the past several months, staff and legal counsel have been meeting with the labor unions to discuss the impacts of the dissolution. Based on Council direction, the agreement before you includes the following benefits for those Belmont-Sancos Fire employees that will be hired by the San Carlos Fire Department. Former employees who have attained permanent status with the BSCFD will not be required to serve a new hire probationary period. Former employees may transfer their service seniority to San Carlos as it relates to vacation accrual and promotion, or, and promotion and position eligibility. Former employees will be placed in the same salary step at the city as they currently have at the Belmont-Sancos Fire Department. For example, if an employee is at top step now, they'd be at top step in San Carlos. Former employees may use vacation hours to purchase up to 240 vacation hours in San Carlos. Former employees may transfer 100% of their accrued sick balance. Employees who are hired by BSCFD before January 1st, 2009, will be eligible for the city's longevity program, which is similar to our other employees in the city. That concludes my presentation. The JPA is legal counsel. Libert Cassidy and Whitmore is here, as is Joan Casman, our legal counsel, and we're all happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Mendenhall. First, we'll call for public item, comment on Item 11A. I don't have any slips, so... Seeing none. Okay. Are there any questions from the Council? Mr. Grokot, do you have anything?
I just have one. Are we, there are, take more, more employees than just firefighters to run a fire department, most of which will get from Redwood City in terms of the management part, but there's some others that we'll need. Are we gonna see similar kind of material for those?
This agreement would cover the inspector, the emergency preparedness coordinator...
So, it covers those.
And the firefighters, and the captains.
I didn't pick up on that. Okay. Oh, I see it now. I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Royce, do you have any questions? Mr. Grisilli?
Again, being at a disadvantage of my colleagues on my left, because you guys, you know, talked about this at the Fire Board. So, on the steps, the city has five, but, but our former, our current Fire Department has six. What are the dollar differences there?
Uh, let me pull that up for you. If you recall, when, I think it was at the July 11th meeting, Council approved the reduction of salary to be the equivalent of seven and a half percent less than what they're making now.
Right. But doesn't this impact that more than seven and a half percent? Add on to that? Different steps, depending on the individuals, where they move through?
We looked at the top step when we did our analysis.
Right. Just the top step. So, people below that would lose more than seven and a half percent?
Well, the steps are about 5% in between step one, step two, step three, step four.
Okay.
Mr. Grisilli, so if I'm getting your question right, you're saying there's a bigger gap in between step six and step one?
Well, I don't know whether, I'm not sure if there is.
That's what he's asking.
I'm asking the question, that it seems like if you're in the wrong...
Yeah.
...step, you're gonna get the short, you're gonna, it's gonna cost you more than seven and a half percent.
So, is it 5% between each step in the Belmont-Sancos Fire Department? Because if so, then that's a 30% difference between step six and step one, where in San Carlos, it's a 25% difference.
Well, through the Chair, our intent is that if they're at step six in Belmont, they'd come over at step five. And when we did our analysis to compare, we took the step six, and we reduced that by seven and a half percent. So, we would look at them as step five and step six being the same.
But what if they're at step two in Belmont-Sancos Fire Department? Does that put them at step one in San Carlos?
Then they would be at step two in San Carlos.
So, if they're at step five in Belmont-Sancos Fire Department, are they at step five as well in San Carlos, or are they at step four? Because you said step six was step five for us. Where's...
Five is as high as we go, so the intent would be if they're at step five, they would come over at step five.
Okay.
We don't have a step six.
So, they're short, they're short 5%?
Yeah. That's what I'm wondering.
That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. You're short, if you were at five, if you were in the Belmont-Sancos Fire Department, there's a step six. So, you'd get 5% if it still existed. But because you're coming over, there is no step up. You're done. You're, you're top, you're at the top.
Mr. Malpe, you look like you want to add something.
Yeah. I don't see there being a, I don't see there being a disparity in that. If you're, if you were at step five and you came over at step five, you might actually[1564.28] If you're, if you were at step five and you came over at step five, you might actually not have a reduction--
Right.
--in your salary coming over, because step five is lower, it's 5% lower. So instead of the people that are at step six now having a seven and a half percent reduction, the people that were at step five would only have a 2.5% reduction when they came over. It's all going to the same step.
I guess I'm looking at it differently, where you're, you don't have the option, you're not going to get that kick, you're not going to get that extra step.
That's true. You wouldn't, you wouldn't have the ability to get the extra step, but under this situation, had you gotten the extra step in the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, it just means that you would be giving it up to go to step five here, whereas if you hadn't got it yet, you'd only be giving up 2.5% to go to step five here.
Well, again, I apologize, I haven't, it's easier for me to look at it on a piece of paper than it is to try to discuss it.
Sure, I understand.
It just seems like there's an inequity somewhere if there's five on one side and six on the other, and like Mr. Klein said, 30% versus 25, it seems like there's a shortage somewhere.
I think in this instance, the shortage is working in the employees' favor that are at the other steps, because if they were at step five, you could argue that we would put them at step four, but we're not, we're putting them at step five here.
But if they're at step five in Belmont-San Carlos, they have no ability to go any higher than that. They're going to move over at step five, that's all there is. If they're in the fire department, they could kick up another five.
That's correct, which, in which case, they would be earning seven and a half percent more.
That's my point, they would be earning more. So they're taking a hit by having the extra, the way we have this.
Right, well, they would be, if you were at step five in the fire department now, and you came over at step five for us, you would be taking a hit of 2.5% immediately, and you would lose that ability to earn possibly 5% more.
So you're saying, because as you said, you put it on the top step, that's how you gauge the seven and a half percent?
Yes.
I wanted to add just through the chair that when we worked on the steps, we also found that at the JPA, not all the steps were uniform, and they weren't 5% per grade like they are in the city and most cities, so we had to realign them. But as Mrs. Mendenhall said, we started at the top step, just to be consistent, since there were a couple job ranges that were a little unusual.
Well, it's, again, I, I'll somewhat take your word for it, because you guys worked on it, and I didn't, and I don't know if it was even brought up at the fire board about that, so I, you know, or was it brought up at all, the steps?
Well, we were just mainly discussing the transitional MOU. We weren't discussing what each other's cities paying, because that's up to the cities, it has nothing to do with the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department.
Right, okay, well, okay. I guess that was my question, thank you, Rebecca.
Okay. Mr. Royce, do you have any questions? Mr. Grokot?
On this step issue, it just seems to me like if you're, what I would have fought anyways, we asked for a reduction of seven, was it seven and a half percent?
Seven and a half percent.
Yes.
And so, it seems you would take whatever the starting salary is, for example, let's talk about a firefighter, okay? You take the starting salary of what we, what Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department offers, you reduce it 7.5%. And then you take the very top step, which it sounds like you did, and you reduce that 7.5%. Now you have to divide that increment into five steps instead of six steps. Is that what you did?
Actually, we looked at the top step for each entity--
Yeah.
--and started with that, and took the top step and reduced that by 7.5%.
Same idea.
The same idea, yes.
Same end result.
Same end result. Okay. If, I don't know, to me, that sounds like that's right.
Might be.
Well, and Mr. Moore, you brought up that there were some inequities in the steps at the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. So were they all 5% or were some smaller?
Well, I guess the point, and it goes to what Ms. Mendenhall was saying, the reason that we decided as a group to start at the top step was because, and we were using 7.5% as a guide, is because the steps were not all graduated 5% per step as we would do them at the city. And I guess to Mr. Grokot's question of, do you start at the bottom or start at the top, we thought it would be better to start at the highest salary rather than the lowest salary.
So you started at the highest salary, reduced it 7.5%, and then did 5% steps down five times?
Correct. That's right.
How, just a question of clarity, because most people don't know what we're talking about when it comes to steps. How many years does it take to jump a step? So if I started step one, how many years does it take for me to get to step two?
One, assuming that you have a satisfactory job approval or job performance.
So to get all the way to the top level of pay, it takes five years?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that people understand that this isn't a prolonged step process, that after five years, you're at the top step in San Carlos.
Yes.
As long as you have a satisfactory job performance.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Seeing that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number 2011--
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four. This is a resolution of the city council, city of San Carlos approving the transitional memorandum of understanding between the agency and the fire management unit and the International Association of Firefighters Local 2400.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. I have one other item of discussion after we--
Okay. Well, we'll open it up for discussion then.
I suppose this, if we approve this, then it still could be, other things you've brought to us, it's been said it could be a negotiated item in the future. This would apply as well, correct?
You want me to--
Yeah, go ahead.
--take this? Yeah, I mean, all the items related to the city's salary and benefit resolution, which is really what you were talking about a minute ago--
Right.
--when you were talking about the steps, really aren't covered by this transitional MOU. The transitional MOU, this is the JPA's final MOU with the employees, so it's wrapping up those issues. All the issues in the salary and benefit resolution, and you'll see that item I here, eight, 11AI, is an amendment to the salary and benefit resolution to cover a few of these additional things that were agreed to in this transitional MOU. All those items would be covered by the meet and confer process, and would come back with any new memorandum of understanding that were developed in the future with whatever unions are representing employees of our fire department.
Okay.
But that, just through the chair, but that will be after October, or after September 30th or after October 1st?
That's--
Sometime.
That's correct. But all the issues that the employee groups of the JPA identified have been addressed through this transitional MOU, and would, with the action of 11AI, be reflected in the city's salary and benefit resolution. So in other words, you would have reached agreement sort of through the JPA on the initial terms and conditions of employment.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion? No, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Moving on to item 11AI, consideration of adoption of resolution amending the San Carlos Fire Department's salary and benefits resolution, SCFD. Mrs. Mendenhall.
As a result of your last action, it is now necessary to amend the salary and benefit resolution for the San Carlos Fire Department. In addition to those changes that were just discussed as part of the transitional MOU, council has directed staff to amend the following benefits to be consistent with the benefits offered to other city employees. So for sworn personnel, we'll change the sick leave accrual from the equivalent of one week per year to 12 hours per month. For sworn personnel, we'll change the vacation leave accrual from the equivalent of one week per year to 132 hours per year, or the equivalent of two and a half weeks, which is consistent with what other city employees receive. Based on the elimination of the sleep exemption that was done at the last agenda meeting, we need to change the work period from 28 days to 24 days. And for employees hired on or after January 1st, 2009, and before December 13th, 2010, retiring from PERS with 15 years of continuous city and JPA service, the former employees of the BSCFD will be eligible for $350 per month of longevity pay, which is consistent with what the members of our teamsters unit receive. Employees hired after December 13th, 2010 will be eligible for the VIBA program that's been previously approved for the other units. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mrs. Mendenhall. We're going to call for public comment on item 11AI. Seeing none, we'll go to council questions. Mr. Grisilli, do you have any?
No.
Mr. Grokot, do you have any?
Yeah, just one. Remind me why we needed to change the 28 to 24 with the sleep exemption?
So under the FLSA rules for the sleep exemption, we were using a 28-day work period, which would allow for 200, up to 212 hours of work before overtime would be paid. Changing it to 24 days reduces the time of the built-in overtime to 10 hours instead of 28 hours. It's going to reduce our time, and since we no longer have the sleep exemption, we don't need that longer period of time.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Royce?
No questions.
All right, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, resolution number 2011--
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos adopting resolution amending the San Carlos Fire Department's salary and benefit resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Grokot. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Could you skip me, please?
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Back to Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mendenhall. Moving on to 11B, consideration of adopting resolution updating the city's customer service policy. Mrs. Bowland, step on up to the plate.
On a lighter note, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, your honor.
Before you leave, thank you, Chief Skinner and Deputy Chief for coming. Sorry we didn't call you up, but I'm sure you'll have plenty of time up here in the future.
By the way, Chief Skinner, nice article in the Redwood City Spectator about you. Very nice. I recommend anybody who wants to know all about Mr., or Chief Skinner, to read the article. It's a very, very nice article.
And Chief Skinner, if you could sign one to Bob over here and send it to him, I'm sure he'll put it up on his locker.
Thanks.
Mrs. Bowland?
Yes, Christine Bowland, city clerk. I appreciate you saving the best item for last here. Tonight, for your consideration, is an update to the city's customer service policy adopted in 2006 by the council. There are three main areas of revision to the policy. One is to provide an introductory paragraph to the policy outlining the commitment employees need to embrace to achieve the highest level of customer service. Incorporation of customer relationship management software that we use on a daily basis, that we log complaints and an occasional compliment or two. Additional sections on professionalism, friendly, helpful, and courteous service, and by that I mean training employees on how to give full attention to the customer, providing eye contact, actively listening to our constituents, not texting while talking, Mr. Mayor, trying to answer telephone calls by the second ring, use of empathy, refraining from profanity, which is never appropriate in the workplace, things like that. So internally, there's a section we beefed up a little bit, ways to provide information and enable effective communication within our departments, so internally and externally to our citizens. I'm here for you, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowland. Is there any public comment on item 11B? Seeing none, we'll go to council questions and then discussion. Mr. Grokot, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have one question. Recently, you acted as city manager. Did you have any customer complaints during that period?
No, not at all. As a matter of fact, I think I saved the city about $3 million.
So on a serious note, just, my only question is, the policy that we have, when you log a complaint, a response to that, to whoever lodged it, what's our--
It goes through our customer relationship management software, so there's the initiator, and it's routed to the appropriate department, and it has to be followed through, and then the person completing the complaint, fulfilling the problem, has to log in and resolve the issue. Otherwise, the software keeps bugging you on a daily basis. So it is effective.
And then I had another question that, because I saw this come through our council mail recently, where there was a complaint logged about a crosswalk in town, and then because that person wasn't getting immediate response from the council, they felt like the council members didn't really care. And that's kind of a touchy issue, because we have to be careful about responding together, you know, because of Brown Act violations. And I'm just wondering if we should develop some kind of policy where, on situations like that, where a complaint comes in and it's been addressed to the council? And that happens quite often, where we get a complaint, and of course, oftentimes, our response is, let's wait and see what staff does if they respond to it. But perhaps we need something where we have something where whoever's the mayor sends something out, just so that person feels like an elected official has gotten back to them, because it seems like there's a little void in there, especially, you know, in terms of impression.
Yeah, sure. And I think in those instances, it's, never hurts to notify staff or copy staff on your letter, call the manager's office, and we can close the loop on those types of issues.
And, Mr. Grokot, that would be a great thing to bring up on Monday, and we could talk about maybe a policy for us council members, how we're going to handle stuff like that, so it's not, you know, five council members responding where we have--
You mean under electronic policy?
Yeah. Under that, or, you know, we could talk about it at the retreat, trying to develop a policy for the council, because I completely agree with what you're saying, it just, a lot of times, it's wait for staff to go, and then they feel like they're not being reached out to, so.
Right, right, okay.
So can we log that in for Monday, Mr. Malpe? Okay.
Very good, yeah, very good, thank you.
Mr. Royce?